All right, I will call the regular session of the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Here.
Little? Little?
He's not showing up.
Okay, Schwartz?
Here.
White?
Here.
Tralka?
Here. Please join me in a moment of silence to reflect on our actions. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will entertain a motion to receive the agenda as proposed or amended.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Item number two, public comments. Do we have anybody in the room that would like to provide public comment? Do we have it? Uh, yes, yes, sir.
My name is Justin Jensen. I'm a regional director for Senator Joanie Ernst. I'm just here today just to hear what's going on in Black Hawk County. I'm a resident of Black Hawk County myself, so thank you for everything you do and have a great day.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody on Zoom that would like to provide public comment? Yes, uh... Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I'm assuming you're pointing to me?
Yes, yes, I'm having a hard time reading your name, but Dee, yes.
Right. It's a Dutch name. Uh, my name is Dee Van de Venner. I live at 3012 Abraham Drive in Cedar Falls, Iowa, and I'm here today to follow up on the petition that I emailed all of you yesterday regarding a mask mandate for Black Hawk County similar to like Dubuque County, Lynn County, and Johnson County. So why do we bring this petition before you when number one, rates are going down, and number two, there has been a third approval of a vaccination? Well, why? Because all the experts say now is not the time to let our guard down. In fact, now more than ever, it's time to turn up the volume, so we finally get ahead of the virus and stay ahead of it. Additionally, new strains make it all the more necessary to follow the CDC's guidelines of wearing a mask, washing your hands, and watching your distance. My hope is that your minds are open to the scientists and the experts. I have a couple of quotes here from the Associate Director of Global Health Policy at the Kaiser Family Foundation, who says, "One can understand the feeling that we need to get beyond this, but we still haven't reached the end of the road with the virus. In fact, uh, new cases are creeping up every day and maybe even rise again." The Associate Professor of Medicine at the University of Pittsburgh notes, "If the country can get through a few more months, vaccinations are more widespread. The situation could be much better by summer, but what happens between now and Memorial Day is up in the air." And finally, the epidemiologist at Harvard School of Public Health says bluntly, "Yes, they're rising, and yes, we're risking yet another spike." Cases have been dropping, but you have to remember that this is the case in the presence of those mandates. As you change to allow more contacts along the transmission can happen, more transmission will inevitably happen. And I'll close with a comment shared by, uh, one of the petition signers who wrote, uh, she's adamant about a mask mandate because I am an almost eighteen-year breast cancer survivor, thriver. I want to be able to survive this as well. We really are all in this together, and I would like people for understand, uh, would like for people to understand this. So thank you for considering, and I hope that you'll, uh, follow Dubuque, Lynn, and Johnson County and make a mask mandate, uh, enact a mask mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any others who would like to provide public comment? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Sack.
Good morning, everybody. This is Renata Sack. I live at 414 Sunset Road in Waterloo, and I would like to urge you very much from the bottom of my heart to follow Dubuque and extend this mask mandate. They extended it until June fifteenth, which is a good idea to let us get over the next hump and really truly diminish our cases here. I've heard horrible stories, and I just heard that people are going to stores without masks, and when they are asked by an attendant in the store to please follow store policies and wear a mask, they refuse to do so. And it's very sad because, uh, Black Hawk County has carried a huge burden of this, um, pandemic, and we should not create more suffering and more disasters than necessary. We should help to get over this. Please consider this mask mandate, and please do it. I would really, really urge you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any others would like to provide public comment? Yeah, yes, Mrs. Juon, Councilmember Juon.
Yes, yes. Good morning. My name is Sharon Juon. I live at nineteen forty-seven Falcon Ridge in Waterloo, and both Dee and Renata spoke so eloquently and covered all the salient points. What I'd like to add, that I can maybe uniquely bring to the table to all of you, is I know how hard it is as an elected official. When we enacted the mask mandate in Waterloo, I got a lot of calls against it, but I also got a lot of calls for it, and those, to me, were the most compelling because those are the ones that were pleading with us to initiate the mask mandate to save their, their family members, to save themselves. Um, and as Renata said, I, I have breast cancer. I, I've had it now for ten years, eleven years almost. Um, and I, I hate, as my girl said, "You've been fighting breast cancer for so long, wouldn't it be a shame if you died of the virus?" And I've taken that very seriously. I have gone into very strict quarantine for almost a year now, but we need the help of all of our professionals, our elected officials. Thinking that, that people in Iowa will just wear the mask because they know it's the right thing to do has proven to not be the case. We need to help lead them, and as our elected officials, you are the ones to help us do that. It is not always the most popular thing, but in my estimate, it is the right thing, and that's what we're elected to do. So please enact the mask mandate, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Juon. Any others that would like to provide public comment? Okay. Grant, our Years of Service Awards.
Yes, we have one Years of Service Award today for Susan Warner of the County Attorney's Office for thirty years of service. I don't believe she's here. We'll get this to her.
Congratulations for thirty years of service. I've never held a job that long. Claims and payments, Mr. Perry.
Good morning. This week's expenditures total five million or fifty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirty-six cents. Uh, the larger departments, Sheriff's Department, fourteen thousand thirty-two dollars. Maintenance Department, thirty thousand nine seventy-two. Secondary Roads, thirty-three thousand six seventy-eight. Jail Commissary, thirty thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars. And then finally, this is the, this is really the, the driving force between, uh, for the large expenditures. The solid waste, um, uh, Geo Bond proceeds in the amount of four million six hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
Second.
Any comments, questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes. Item number five, project updates from department heads and/or elected officials. Kathy, how are you?
Morning, Kathy.
Good, thank you. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. Like to give you a brief update on what our, uh, secondary roads crew is doing, as well as some of our contract work. Uh, notable this week has been the roads crew, the bridge crew, has been working on our Quarry Road Bridge project, building the slabs for replacing that small structure later this summer. So they're making good progress on that. Our utility work continues on the Grundy Road project, uh, primarily Mid-American. They are still moving poles back, uh, outside of the, the former right-of-way into the new right-of-way. Uh, we are still waiting on rural water and then Century Link to get their, to get their utilities out of the way. Uh, right now, there is no work going on, on the Cedar River Bridge replacement project just due to the cold temperatures. We're expecting that it'll probably be some time before, uh, PCI is able to come back. Really, some of the next order of work is the, the final grading. We need, uh, warmer temperatures for that grading to be effective, and then the seeding to take place. And then there's some, uh, parking lot work as well. Uh, that's about it. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Kathy, with those outside, uh, organizations that got work to do out there, do we put a timeline on them, or do we have the ability to?
The utility companies on...
Yes, yeah.
Yes, so there's provisions in the Iowa code that allow them, us to give notice, and then they have ninety days. They've been, um, pretty responsive. Uh, we've, of course, had very cold temperatures, which did hinder a lot of that work. Uh, the late, or the early start date, the late start date, excuse me, is, uh, the first part of April for PCI to start work. They haven't officially started the, the contract work yet, but they are, are helping Mid-American get, um, trees and brush out of the way so that they can continue forward. But as far, we have contacted the utilities, and we're making progress on that item.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, uh, department heads or elected officials in the boardroom that would like to provide an update? How about on Zoom? Yolando, Mike, anybody on Zoom that would like to provide an update? Item number six, minutes approved. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
I made that motion, okay. Uh, yes, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved from the last meeting. Hearings, we will have a hearing later on in the meeting in regard to proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-one Guard Rail Project LFM dash six zero 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 dash seven X dash zero seven in various locations throughout Black Hawk County. Item number eight, consent agenda, zero.
So moved.
I will second.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Resolution.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes. Item number nine, contracts and agreements. Uh, A, a resolution that the lower, lowest responsible bid received from Peterson Contractors, Inc., from Rhinebeck, Iowa, letting held February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one at ten AM for Project BROS dash SWP dash C zero zero seven, in parentheses, one six one, long dash SE dash zero seven, for bridge replacement on Gresham Road over Crane Creek from Elk Run Road East, zero point two five miles, FHWA seven six two six zero, with a total bid amount of one million one hundred twenty-four thousand nine hundred fifty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents. The engineer's estimate was nine hundred twelve thousand five hundred seventy-six dollars and seventy-five cents. Be awarded as recommended by Katherine Nicholas, county engineer. Do we have a motion?
So, so moved.
Second.
All right, Kathy?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a few minutes to explain, uh, our decision on this. So as you recall, this is a large structure in the north portion of the county. It is a gravel road. It was closed last year during our inspection process due to, uh, a poor substructure. Uh, we had, it was already in our five-year plan that we wanted to replace this structure. We put the plans together. It was, we are using federal bridge money or swap money, so it's, it's state money, but it's coming to us at the same rate as the federal bridge money was, is. Uh, this was a DOT letting. There were two bids. You can see that our, uh, engineer's estimate was approximately nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Uh, and looking at the bids, they are both considerably higher than our engineer's estimate. Uh, P- PCI Peterson was the low bid at, uh, one point one two four million dollars. I am recommending that you award this contract to PCI. We are hearing from other counties and looking at bridges per square foot costs, that costs are going up. A lot of this has to do with the volatility, volatility of steel, lumber, structural concrete. Prices are, are very high right now as well. Uh, we don't feel that, if we were to re-advertise it, we would probably wait until the fall, and then we wouldn't be building it until next year. And really, with our continuing need to replace bridges, and we have the money available in the federal bridge program, we, I recommend that we move forward and replace the structure. Um, it might be that our prices remain high for, you'll see our second bid here on the next, uh, result, next item is also over our engineer's estimate, but we may be with higher prices for a year or two. I, I just don't have the ability to predict that.
Kathy, how long ago did the engineer provide this estimate?
So we finished and submitted the plans to the Iowa DOT, uh, late last fall. At that time, we were required to submit an engineer's estimate, so, um, probably within five months. And we're looking at DOT prices from this area in particular, but also statewide. And like I said, we talked to other counties. We're, we're able to see what other bids are received throughout the state. And unfortunately, prices are high, a hundred and seventy to two hundred dollars a square foot for structures right now.
And what were they before?
Oh, in prior years. I can give you more current date on this, but I, I know just a few years ago, we were seeing prices closer to a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty.
Okay.
So we're hoping that this is just, um...
Short time.
A short time for a year or two, that prices are high. But of course, we can't, we don't know that.
So this is over two hundred thousand dollars over, two hundred thousand dollars over cost?
Right, so I can explain how we receive funding. So we receive, formerly it was federal bridge money, but the state takes that bridge money now, the federal money, and they give it to us in the form of state money. It's still the same amount. Currently, we are receiving approximately three hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. Now, just due to bridges being very expensive items, we are allowed to borrow ahead, meaning we can, we can borrow ahead four and a half years' worth of bridge money. We can also save money, save money up to, to build larger structures. So we would, in effect, be borrowing ahead. I believe we would be borrowing ahead, uh, two and a half years if you approve both of these structures that are on the agenda today. So that means we either have to look for other sources of funding, like our farm-to-market money, to make up for, um, bridge, to make up for being able to continue to build bridges in future years, or we would use local construction dollars. We have other, uh, pools of money that we can rely on.
Okay, any more questions for Kathy?
You feel, is there any way, Kathy, or do you feel that there's a way that you could wait on this bridge and do some other bridge, uh...
So...
And then do this one at a later date, or is this one at the point that it needs to be replaced immediately?
I guess that's a good question, Supervisor White. We, this structure is currently closed. We do have, this is in the Crane Creek watershed. Those bridges are long ju- just due to the large size of the, the river, excuse me, the creek, the portions of the creek that run through that part of the county. Um, I think you know we have other expensive bridges in that portion of the county. The East Bennington Road Bridge Trust that we have decided not to replace would be another million-dollar structure. Wheeler Road Bridge right now that is currently closed due to winter conditions with the three-ton posting on it, that would also be another million-dollar structure to replace. Uh, we, I don't believe that... Well, first of all, we, we would not be able to get this into another DOT letting until, at the earliest, the fall. So we, we would lose...
The whole season.
The whole s- summer season, right, the construction season, to be working on any type of bridge replacement in the county. And we have, you know, I've told you how we need to keep continuing to replace structures. Uh, you'll see in the next, the next item is a much, uh, less expensive bridge, but again, it's also over, over our engineer's estimate, again, due to the high costs that all of us are continuing to see, uh, with bridge work. Another contributing factor, we believe, is there's just a lot of bridge work right now. The contractors are busy throughout the state, from what we can, what we can tell.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
White?
Yes.
Layland? Layland?
She shut off. There she is. Nope, she's left again.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes. Item nine B, a resolution that the lowest responsible bid received from Jim Schrader Construction, Inc., of Bellevue, Iowa, letting held February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one at ten AM for Project BROS dash SWP dash C zero zero seven, in parentheses, one six four, long dash SC dash zero seven, for bridge replacement on Kimball Avenue over Miller Creek, FHWA seven four four two zero, with a total bid of four hundred fifteen thousand seventy-one dollars and seventy-four cents. The engineer's estimate was three hundred twenty-nine thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty cents. Be awarded as recommended by Katherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second. Kathy?
Yeah, so a very similar situation to what I just explained. Uh, this one is a less expensive bridge, but it is twenty-six percent over the engineer's estimate. Uh, that estimate was current as of last, um, uh, November, I want to say, when we submitted our plans to the DOT. Again, if we don't, um, approve this for accepting the award, then we will have no contract bridges, other than the one you just approved.
How many bids did we, oh, excuse me, Kathy?
I'm sorry, we had, we did have three bids.
Okay.
The DOT received three bids from, for this project.
Good, thank you. Any more questions for Kathy? Hopefully. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes. Item nine C is a resolution that the best bid received from Echo, Cedar Falls, Iowa, in the amount of two thousand six, two thousand sixty-five dollars and forty-seven cents for thirty-three LED lights in the jail kitchen be approved as recommended by Rory Giving, Maintenance Superintendent.
So moved. Second.
Rory?
Good morning, Board. Rory Giving, Maintenance Superintendent. Um, this is, uh, for the jail kitchen. Uh, thirty-three LED flat panel lights. Um, this is, project is in combination of the, uh, ceiling replacement over there. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes. Item ten A is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at nine oh five AM on Tuesday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, in Boardroom two zero one of the Black Hawk County Courthouse, three one six East Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa, on the proposed ordinance number seven seven dash two four nine, from a request submitted by Jacob Reed to rezone two point seven four acres from A Agricultural District to AR Agricultural Residential District east of eight zero zero six Winslow Road in order to construct one new single-family home.
So moved. Second.
Any comments, any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? It is approved. Onto the hearing. It is now approximately nine twenty-eight AM, and this is a hearing bid opening on proposed fiscal year twenty-one Guard Rail Project LFM dash six zero 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 dash dash seven X dash zero seven on, in various locations throughout Black Hawk County.
Motion to retrieve and place on file proof of publication.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Post to close the hearing after all written comments are received.
Kathy? Oh, I'm sorry, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Go ahead, Kathy.
We received no bids on this project.
Do we have any written comments that we received?
No, sir.
Do we have anybody that would like to provide an oral comment? Okay, all those in favor of closing the hearing, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is closed. All right, Kathy, so what's the next step, rebid?
We would like to, again, we feel this is, there are primarily three guard rail contractors in the state of Iowa. We did send bids to all three of them. We did not have a response from either one of them. We don't know if they're just so busy with bridge work. We, we will do some investigation with those, uh, bidders. We would also like to confer with Mr. Trynan about what our next steps would be. We did have this budgeted for FY21 funds. We would like to do this work. It's, right now, it's not a safety problem, but I have told you how the, the, um, timber that holds up these guard rail, they are rotting. We would like to get those replaced, uh, sooner rather than later, so I think we'll be looking at some options to, uh, and working with Mr. Trynan and possibly, probably come back to you next week with some, some solutions.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, bring something back for us so we can take action. All right, item number ten C, do we have any discussion? Does anybody have anything in regard to county preparedness and possible updates for COVID-19?
Chris, I'd just like to thank the citizens that brought that, um, petition regarding a mask mandate to us, and just curious if, if this is something that the board is, um, willing to, to take another look at.
Board members, comments?
I don't think we can talk about it, can we? Mike, can we talk about that?
I think you can comment on your thoughts, just, uh, this is similar to when Supervisor Schwartz, uh, took the temperature, uh, several months ago on the same issue.
Right.
It appears there is a lack of appetite amongst majority to...
Excuse me.
Bring it forward. Who does?
Josh from the Health Department's got his hand up.
All right, go ahead, Josh.
Apologies for cutting off conversation. Um, Dr. Ed Banier had asked me to, um, to be here today to, uh, uh, just to give a brief update on, uh, COVID vaccine planning and, um, uh, our, our COVID, uh, current COVID rates in the county. Um, I can either hold until after discussion on the mask mandate, or I can continue at your preference board.
You can do what? I couldn't understand you.
I can either, um, wait until after you're finished discussing on the mask mandate, or, um, I'll continue at your preference board.
Go ahead. What do you have?
So, um, just wanted to provide an update. Um, Dr. Banier had provided this, uh, update to you all in email, uh, yesterday, but wanted to provide to the board that, um, a vaccination clinic will be taking place at Tyson's Foods this week, um, to, uh, to provide vaccination for their, uh, their staff. Uh, this is an effort where we're able to get additional vaccine for the, uh, for the plant through the, the state for this year, it'll, um, or for this, uh, this week. I will not, um, take away from our, our normal weekly allocation, um, for, um, vaccine to plant, so we are excited to have this opportunity. excited to have this opportunity to vaccinate Tyson Foods and to start working on the manufacturing sector of Tier 2 of Phase 1B, as we are continuing to push through to reach the age 65 and older, and continuing to work to vaccinate our K12 schools with our healthcare partners. And those efforts are continuing this week, and will be continuing into, this next week into March, as well as we finish off the schools, and then go towards additional focus on the manufacturing and critical infrastructure, as well as childcare providers. As far as updates go, on our current rates, levels continue to maintain low in Blackhawk County. We're currently at 14, or I'm sorry, 4% for our 14-day average percent positivity, and that number has been staying low over the past several weeks and days. We are currently at 14,878 positive cases, 1,027 positive serologies, 14,107 recovered cases, and unfortunately, 291 deaths. That was the update I wanted to provide today. If you have any questions for it, I'd be happy to answer them.
Josh, my question that I'm getting from a lot of people that are calling in are totally disgusted that we've moved ahead with doing other areas. We don't finish one, we move on to others. I see in Alaska, they're doing it the right way. They're doing all the elderly first, and when they get through it, then they're moving on. It's like we're picking and choosing different areas, and different areas to do the vaccines in, and I don't think it's, it's not working out, as far as I'm concerned. And the numbers, I'm a numbers guy, and those numbers you guys put on TV are way off course. I don't, I don't understand where you pick them out of the sky or what you do with them, but they just don't jive with the, where you put the percentage, or not the percentage, the numbers of first shots, second shots, and then the one at the bottom. What's that, that the number, total number of shots that we've got thus far? And if that's the case, we got like 300,000 shots sitting someplace in Iowa. Where are they at?
So I'll have to go back and look at the data and get a question for that, that second number. I can say that we are pulling data from the state portal, so that is where we're getting our information from, is directly from the state. The information on the number of doses administered each week that we're putting, each day that we're posting on our website is coming directly from the state portal.
Right, okay.
For that, and that data is populated from IRIS, which is the state immunization registry for Iowa. So I can say that's where we're getting the numbers from. I will follow up and try to see if I can find additional information on the additional sources, but we are tasked from the state, and this is a focus that the state has been having for the last couple of weeks of getting through 80% of our newly allocated doses in each week, and we have, and that is a threshold that we need to meet in order to continue to receive vaccines. And we have been meeting that threshold each week. We have not lost a shipment of vaccines, not being able to get those out quickly enough. So really, all the thanks to our healthcare partners who are doing a lot of the vaccination work out in the community for helping us make sure that we're maintaining that 80% rate.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Josh, how readily available is testing? I got a call from a citizen last week. His wife was going to be flying yesterday, I believe, and he was having a hard time getting her tested to meet the policy of one particular airline to be tested before they could fly. What's the process, and how readily available is testing?
So testing is actually now more readily available than ever. As of last week, state hygienic lab has dropped the requirements to receive both the PCR and the serology testing. So anyone who is wanting vaccine is able to be tested through the state hygienic lab. So testing is becoming more available than ever. I believe I'm familiar with the case that you're speaking of, and I was specifically looking for the antigen testing. That is a little bit more difficult to find. I believe we were able to eventually connect an individual to a location with antigen testing because it's not quite as readily available as the other forms of testing that are a little bit slower with the PCR.
When somebody is tested, what's the turnaround time? How quickly can they get the results?
We do see a little bit of variation, but it is fairly quickly. I'd say it's about one to three days to get the PCR test, and then the antigen test is the same-day test.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Any more questions for Josh? Any reports or information from the board?
I'll just share, we have the first meeting of the year for the Upper Cedar River Watershed Management Authority this evening, but then the other watershed that I'm involved with, which is the Middle Cedar River, which has progressed quite a bit of ways, we're going to have some of my partners I've been working with on that come to a board meeting sometime in the coming weeks, just to share some updates on some of the projects that have been completed within the watershed, but also, or details about the extensive planning that we've been able to do under this HUD grant that is coming to a finish in the coming months. But so it's some exciting work and some exciting progress that we'll be sharing with everybody here in person in the coming weeks.
Thank you, Supervisor Schwartz. Linda, Ms. Leyland?
No, nothing today, thank you.
Craig?
Nothing. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.